Yeah, minutes as reported by the clerk's office.
Thank you, Councilor Maria, second please.
I'll second.
Shannon Councilor Flagel, any errors or omissions? Now, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. We'll move to delegations and related reports. We have several delegations. First is Chad Novak. Mr. Novak, if you could state your name, who you represent. You have 10 minutes for your presentation. There may be questions afterwards, and we'd ask that you stick to the text that you submitted to the clerk's office.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fugere, city councillors and city administration. I would first like to say congratulations to all of you for being successful in the civic election, and welcome to your first official city council meeting as the new city council for 2012 to 2016. My name is Chad Novak, and I'm here to speak as a taxpayer of the city of Regina, but also as one of the 9,899 people that signed the petition asking to remove public dollars from the funding of the stadium. Now, I want to be clear up front, or I want to clear up one of the common myths that has been told to the public about the petition, that those who signed it, they were fully informed as to what the petition actually was, and it wasn't necessarily against the RRI project as a whole, but simply the current funding model as proposed. There have been numerous attempts to misinform the public as to what the petition was about by multiple parties who have an obvious vested interest in the new stadium being built. I want to be clear that a good portion of those who asked about the petition were fine with having a new stadium, but they simply wanted to have a say in exactly how it is to be done and how it is to be funded. Another major concern was how our city could afford a new stadium at the current time, with all our other spending priorities on the table, including the pension deficit, crumbling infrastructure, roads that need desperate attention, a wastewater treatment plant, along with a new library and a proposed new police station. In addition to that, the pension deficit. All of these things, as outlined in the capital plan, will be putting our city into a financial position that could make it difficult to address any future important issues that may come up. Also, a majority of the people that signed would rather see a long-term financial plan that allows us to build a retractable roof dome stadium, as the preferred option, as they did not see the added benefit necessarily to building another open-air stadium, even if the plan was to make it roof-ready. This is supported by the Economic Impact Study that the government Saskatchewan commissioned in 2010, that shows that there was minimal additional economic benefit to building an open-air, another open-air stadium, and a renovation mosaic would have been the preferred choice when comparing the two. Another common concern was how the RRI attempts to package two completely different projects together in what seems to be an effort to make the entire RRI project more palatable to the average citizen. More often than not, citizens felt that the two portions of the project should be kept separate, and in fact, as per discussions with some of current and former councillors, if that were the case, even they would not support the stadium project as has been proposed. My question then is, why is it okay to go ahead with the stadium project as proposed, simply because it has been packaged together with a housing project? I feel strongly that although the 9,899 signatures does fall short of the 16,000 or 20,000, depending on who you ask in the city administration, the signatures that are required to force a referendum, considering the difficulties that the organizers and signature gatherers were facing, and the misinformation going out to the public, that this should be taken just as seriously as if they got, as if they got the required number of signatures to force that referendum. Some examples of difficulties included parties calling businesses that held the petition and demanding the petition be removed from their business, simply because it was quote-unquote Constant misinformation by members of our former city council as to what the petition was actually about, propaganda and advertising by the Saskatchewan Rough Riders, Regina Chamber of Commerce, and the Regina Regional Opportunities Commission, trying to sway people to believe that the new stadium would result in tremendous economic impact to Regina, which is actually contrary to the provincial study, and even in advertising campaign, simply telling people to quote-unquote "support the riders, support the stadium," and in capital letters, "don't sign the petition." Keep in mind that you have always had the opportunity to put this to a public vote, and it would have been at little to no additional cost if the question had simply been added to the October 24th ballot. Now, there are some that argue that a vote on October 24th was the referendum, and if that is indeed the case, I would argue that a majority of the voters actually voted for someone that stood for a plan other than the RRI that is proposed as is before you today. In closing, I would request that, at minimum, all future RRI spending be suspended until a full review has been conducted on the four options that were available to you as for the 2010 provincial study and are still available to you, including the $5.8 million renovation to Mosaic Stadium, which in 2008, even the former mayor Pat Fiacco was in full support of. It should be noted that $5.8 million renovation addresses the majority of complaints about the current Mosaic Stadium, notably the washrooms and seating. Now, once the review of these options is complete, I would ask that you adopt a public input strategy, similar to how the design Regina process has been conducted. I will now answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Are there any questions of the delegation? There are none, you can return to the gallery.
Thank you.
Hold on, I guess there is one. Councilor Fugere has a question for you.
Yes.
Hi, Chad. Thanks for coming. Just if you have anything else to add?
I just want to make sure that, I think that due diligence is what I'm really trying to stress here today. I know that things got heated over the course of the election, and you know, I make no apologies for that. I'm sure that nobody else makes apologies, I mean, that's what comes in the election. But I just think that close to 10,000 signatures, considering we had such a difficult time getting the word out there about what the petition was actually about, and what the stadium is actually about, believe it or not, and this is no word of a lie, people still believe that we're building a stadium on CP grounds, a dome stadium. It is a total truth. I've heard that from several people on the road. So, I mean, if they don't even know about the new stadium, please, please just ask for public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. No other questions? Thank you very much. We'll go to the next delegation. Shannon Corkery. Please come forward, state your name, who you represent, and there may be questions from members of council afterwards. Thank you.
My name is Shannon Corkery, and I represent myself. Good evening to fellow citizens, council members, and Mayor Fugere. I committed myself to one weekend to collect signatures for the stadium petition. I collected approximately 50 signatures, but more importantly, I had some wonderful conversations with people about, with their views and concerns. Talking to random strangers about social issues, politics, and how they perceive councils and democracy should function was definitely a highlight for me. In this presentation, I'll do my best to share some of the feedback that I heard, as well as my own views. Many people I spoke to were Ryder fans, who were disappointed with the council, but the decision-making process was not transparent. To paraphrase what one man said, "First, there was a plan in one location, and then this new plan was presented, but I do not think the public was aware or consulted in between." Some people were concerned with council's priorities, as they felt that infrastructure needs such as sewage should take priority over plans for a new stadium. People who were aware of the Regina Revitalization Initiative as a whole were concerned that the majority of new housing would be market rate. These discussions made me question, who is consulted on the initiative? Was the Regina Anti-Poverty Ministry consulted? And at what point was the North Central Community Association consulted? Is there funding for genuine community consultation and outreach in these neighborhoods? Or are the decisions going to be made behind the scenes by people of financial interests? Some people are skeptical that the stadium as an entertainment venue would benefit the community as a whole. As people who cannot afford to attend Ryder games, frequent new businesses, restaurants, and participate in nightlife would not be able to benefit from the new spaces for work and play in the same way as those who have resources and currently enjoy quality living. The point of this particular argument is not to create a divide between people, but question the inclusivity of this initiative. There were a few instances where people did not want to sign. One person wanted to do more investigative research on their own. One woman told me that she felt, once we elect council, we should give them full authority to make decisions. A friend of mine knew someone that didn't want to sign because they would benefit financially through the plan development. The majority of people I spoke with did not have the attitude that, once council members are elected, they should be given free rein. The vision that I heard is that the council's purpose is to represent the interests of all citizens of Regina. I personally feel that it is troubling that a decision may be supported not due to its social benefits for the community, but due to personal financial gain. In my discussions with folks, the term "conflict of interest" did come up, as there is concern that the people involved in the decision-making process may have ties or relationships to businesses that may profit from the venture. This is not intended in ill spirit, or as in accusation, but illustrates that, again, the question of whose interests are being represented is a reoccurring theme. For myself, the issue is why are we putting funds into development that will significantly benefit those who already have, and will have little benefit to the quality of life of those who are not able or not interested in participating in a culture that is based on spending and consumption? Power is given in faith that it will be used justly. In this spirit, I ask, as the council continues to make decisions in this new term, to keep this question front and center. Who is truly benefiting and who is being forgotten? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Corkery, for your presentation. Any questions? Councilor O'Donnell.
Thanks, Your Worship. Good evening. So, I heard a report back from you. Tell me, what would this exercise that you went through spur you to do in the future? What have you learned that will change your actions about how you may engage public officials or democracy?
Interesting question. I think one of the things that I learnt was that I shouldn't assume that people may agree or disagree with me based on occupation or politics or anything, because some of the responses I had were very unexpected. So, I think it was a good, good learning experience for me not to like base, you know, question stereotypes and things like that. Another thing for me would be, because I heard about the stadium, like, to put funding into the stadium a couple of years ago, because I remember I wrote a report on it for a class, and, but in between then and then the new announcement of the petition, I hadn't done very much in between. So, I think, and I was out of the city for a little bit too, but it would have been good that if I maybe met with some councillors in person and talked more about my concerns, and also if I felt that the council wasn't doing consultation, that I could have went to community associations and say, "Hey, what do you think about this initiative, and what are some things as like, we could do to make it more of a collective or ownership of the people?" So, it will be benefiting more people if it's going to go forward. So, if I had more time or thought on this, that is maybe some of the things that I would have done.
Good. I like your response. So, can I ask you a rhetorical question?
Yeah.
This is what I heard you say. I want you to comment if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I heard you say that there's a social responsibility among citizens to find out what's going on.
Well, you know what I was thinking about today? I was like, why didn't I do the things that I would have done? And it's because it's not, I don't, I wasn't elected as official to do consultation. I'm a student. I'm working, I'm traveling, I have some other reasons. If I would have been saying, "I want to be an elected official, where community consultation is part of my job," then I would be running for council.
Good response, thank you. I want to ask you one more question.
Yeah.
Are you aware that when council, the dis-council?
Yeah.
Is elected, that we take an oath, and the oath says that we cannot benefit from our decisions? Are you aware of that?
No, I was not aware of that oath.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Donnell. Other questions of the delegation? There are none, you can return to the gallery. Thank you very much. Next delegation is Grace Jasper. Ms. Jasper, if you could identify yourself, who you represent, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation as well, and there may be questions afterwards.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of the council. My name is Grace Jasper, and I feel very privileged to be part of a dedicated group of volunteers who gathered signatures for this petition on a public referendum to pre-p但现在 to city council. For six weeks, I collected signatures myself, primarily by canvassing door-to-door in both east, west, south, and central Regina. I also attended public events. I would like to share some of my experience, along with the issues raised by the people of Regina. A number of them have been raised already, but I want to say that I was welcomed with gratitude by many, and treated with respect by all others. And so, the gratitude, I think, indicated that people would have really appreciated being consulted. In fact, my presentation reads 9,899 citizens who want to be consulted about a new stadium. Four central concerns emerged: spending priorities, planning, financing, and communication. Spending, quote, "tax money can much more effectively be spent on priorities related to the needs of the majority and not the wants of the minority." For example, social housing, infrastructure were two of the main ones, but there was water, sewer, reducing the budget deficit, pension accountability, and many of the other items that have been already mentioned. In terms of planning, many people, including several contractors, indicated that the whole decision-making process leading up to the stadium proposal was flawed and haphazard. Financing, the cost of the stadium should not be a tax-bear burden, and private money should be sought more aggressively. Clarity and communication, there was a lack of information on the possible renovation of Mosaic Stadium and its cost as an alternative. My contact with people in so many areas of Regina was a rewarding education in citizenship and civic responsibility. I had the opportunity to learn both from and about others. At one bungalow, there were so many young children that I asked if they were operating a daycare. They told me two families were sharing the house because they could not afford separate rental units. This story typifies one of the challenges facing Regina. I would like to thank the people of Regina for their hospitality, their input, and support, and to the city council, I respectfully submit my observations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There may be questions from members of council? Any questions? You made yourself perfectly clear. Oh, Mr. Frazier, raise your hand quicker.
Yeah, thanks so much. Just again, if you have any other, anything else to add?
No, just that I would urge you, as the last speaker did, to reconsider all this whole question and move very cautiously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next delegation is Florence Stratton. Florence Stratton, if you could identify yourself, who you represent, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation as well.
My name is Florence Stratton. I am one of many Regina citizens who collected signatures for the stadium petition. The purpose of the petition was to give Regina citizens an opportunity to vote in a referendum on whether or not they wanted their tax dollars spent on a new stadium. We are, of course, disappointed we did not reach our goal of 20,000 signatures, the number required to force a referendum on the stadium. However, the signature count of 9,899 is a significant number. It should indicate to city council that there is a considerable level of dissatisfaction with the stadium proposal. Moreover, the experience of collecting signatures was very gratifying. Every signature on the petition was an occasion for a conversation with a fellow citizen. Indeed, there are at least 9,899 questions about the stadium. City council might find it useful to know some of the reasons Regina citizens gave for signing the petition. Some did not like the proposed location for the new stadium. Parking was for them the main issue. Some wanted a dome stadium. Why build an open-air stadium when we already have one, they wondered? For many Ryder fans, Taylor Field is sacred ground. It's where Ron Lancaster and George Reed played. It is the home of the Saskatchewan Rough Riders. The most admirable, in my view, of all those who signed the petition are the Ryder fans who want a new stadium and approve of the current plan. They signed as a matter of principle and against their own self-interest. City council, they said, had forced the stadium on Regina citizens without consultation. Democracy had to be defended. Past and present city councillors have suggested that referendums are not part of representative democracy, the kind of democracy practiced in Canada. They are wrong. As many of its citizens know, Regina itself has a long history of referendums on contentious and/or expensive projects, including fluoride in the water supply, the construction of a fire hall, and the building of the Louvre. There has even been a stadium referendum. In 1977, Regina citizens had the opportunity to vote on whether to allow the city to borrow $4 million to upgrade Taylor Field. The proposed stadium is both a contentious and an expensive project. As many of those who signed the petition said, city council should have put it to a referendum. However, the main reason people gave for signing the petition was that Regina has so many other pressing needs. Of these, affordable housing was at the top of most people's list. Collecting petition signatures, I met some of the people behind the statistics on Regina's affordable housing crisis. This is a story told to me by a woman who signed the petition at Victoria Square Mall. She is, she said, a single mother of three children. She works full-time. Her rent is $1,600 per month. She often has to choose between paying the rent and buying groceries. She often has to resort to the food bank. Here's another story from the stadium petition. One afternoon, I was collecting signatures in the city hall courtyard, when a couple came up and asked to sign the petition. Having printed her name in the petition, the woman stopped and asked, "Is an address necessary? We don't have one. We sleep in the park." As she and her partner went off, they wished us luck with the petition. As city council has often said, the stadium is only one part of the Regina Revitalization Initiative, a plan that also has a housing component. City officials insist that this housing component will include affordable housing units. Having read the RRI document, I'm not so sure. What the document actually calls for is, quote, "up to 700 new affordable, comma, market-rate housing units." As another delegation pointed out at the July 2012 meeting of city council, "up to 700 units," because it could as easily mean one unit as 700 units. Moreover, as everyone knows, the market rate for housing in Regina is anything but Even if there are to be 700 units of affordable housing, they won't be built and ready for occupation for at least five years. Regina is experiencing an affordable housing crisis right now, and because of that housing crisis, the lives of many of our fellow citizens have been made miserable. Before concluding, I would like to thank everyone who signed the stadium petition. It was a privilege and a pleasure to have all those many conversations with our fellow citizens. I will end by looking forward to a better future for all of Regina's citizens. At its December 2012 meeting, city council approved, sorry, 2011 meeting, city council approved the disbursement of $100,000 for the development of a city of Regina comprehensive housing strategy. I look forward to the release of this document and to the implementation of its recommendations. During the run-up to the municipal election, our new mayor, Michael Fugere, said on more than one occasion that if elected, he would make a housing summit his first priority. I look forward to this housing summit taking place. It cannot happen soon enough. I also look forward to concrete, to concrete action to solve Regina's housing crisis resulting from it. As you may know, this coming Thursday, November 22nd, is National Housing Day, a time to remember that safe, secure housing is a human right protected under the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. I look forward to our new city council marking the day by making an affordable housing announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stratton, for your presentation. Are there any questions of the delegation? Councilor O'Donnell.
Thanks, Your Worship. Good evening. We've chatted before, and we've done it in this forum, so you've been here a few times. And oftentimes, I'll say your theme is on housing. So, I have a couple of questions about housing to you. You have repeatedly mentioned to council about the importance and need for housing, and I would use the phrase "social housing" in there somewhere. Have you done the same with the provincial government?
Yes.
Could you give me an idea of, in what form you've done that?
I have sent numerous letters to both my MLA and the premier, endless emails, endless letters. I have demonstrated out in front of the Legislative Building on numerous occasions.
Thank you. And so, could you also tell me if you've done the same with the federal government, i.e. through your local MP?
Yes.
And to any satisfaction, may I ask?
I don't seem to get much satisfaction anywhere, but I keep trying.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Donnell. Any other questions? Thank you. You can return to the gallery. Thank you for your presentation. Next delegation is Glennis Eberle. Please identify yourself, who you represent, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and there may be questions afterwards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council ladies and gentlemen. My name is Glennis Eberle, and I represent myself and all the people who asked me these questions while I was collecting signatures for the stadium petition. A question frequently asked was, whose interest is this football stadium to serve? The citizens who will be paying for it, or the several groups who stand to profit from its construction? Another question that often came up was, why city council did not look after the fundamental, basic, everyday needs of this city before plunging us into a new expensive football stadium that serves no further purpose or use than the stadium we already have, while at the same time saddling Regina with a huge debt that would limit our capacity to deal with Regina's present and future needs? How could we be so short-sighted, people would ask me? I, of course, I didn't have the answers to these questions. Often, people from outside the city wanted to sign the petition, and they had lots of questions too. Usually, they were angry that their tax dollars were going to be frittered away on another new home for the Rough Riders when they themselves didn't have homes. My standard answer to their lament was, you think, uh, my standard answer to their lament was, you think you have it bad? We citizens of Regina get to pay twice, and our children will have to carry the burden of this debt for years to come, and may also never own a home. Collecting signatures is an exhausting task. People often told me very sad stories about their lives. Often, their problems could be relatively easily fixed if we had the political will and the finances to fix them. Sometimes, I even ended up apologizing myself for our failure to address their fundamental needs. The list and the questions include: low-cost housing for a multitude of people, a revitalized welfare and healthcare system, the renewal of a decayed infrastructure, waste treatment plants, roads, sewer systems, and so on, the need for a transportation system that would end the daily gridlock that makes rush hour a day-long affair in the city of Regina, a transit system that meets the needs of its passengers and its potential passengers, a plan to make Regina into an environmentally friendly city, the use of solar heat in city buildings, and whatever else could be encouraged, the banning of cars from the downtown area so that it can become a more humane place to be, an end to the unfunded liability of the city workers' pension plan. The list goes on and on and on. These are the questions. People are looking to you for the answers. I have always hoped I would live in a city where human beings are not treated as means but ends in themselves, in a place that inspires others, in a place that looks after the collective well-being first before it caters to the wants of the few, a place we can, we can all take pride in. My question is this: is this our city of Regina? And I, I hope you people will be able to say yes to me.
Thank you, Ms. Eberle, for your presentation. Thank you, Ms. Eberly, for your presentation. Are there any questions from members of council?
Yes.
Your Worship. Councillor Fraser, go ahead.
Your Worship, you'll never guess, the same question. Do you have anything else to add?
Well, what bothers me, I guess my question is, is that the Saskatchewan Roughriders, the Roughriders are called the Saskatchewan Roughriders, and I see this as a bit of downloading on the part of the provincial government onto the citizens of Regina. We, we, we want this stadium, but we need a lot more help from the province. And that's what I would be hoping, hoping that you people would be talking to them about, which I'm sure you're trying to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eberly. Thank you very much. Next delegation is Jeanne Ma. Ms. Ma, if you could identify yourself, who you represent, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and there may be questions afterwards.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Ma, and I'm speaking as a citizen of Regina. Those of us who have tried to have discussions about the stadium are told, "Do you want to stop progress?" I've been trying to understand how a stadium where we sit to watch sports or musical spectacles is considered to be progress in 2012. When the riders began over 100 years ago, we were building a progressive city with a Carnegie library, the Legislative Buildings, new churches, schools, a wonderful trolley system for public transport, and a symphony orchestra. In 1928, when the riders claimed Park de Young as their home field, when a grandstand was built in 1936, when renamed Taylor Field in 1947, and when a referendum in 1977 allowed the expansion of Taylor Field, all this was progress. Many people have developed a great attachment to Taylor Field over the years because it has grown up along with the city and with us. But why do we consider it to be progress to build a new stadium which, along with the shortfall in the pension plan, will put the city further into debt? We are told that a new roof-ready stadium will bring in big musical events because these days somehow economies of scale hinder performers from playing in smaller venues such as Ever's Place or the Centre of the Arts. Is it progress to pay huge prices to hear old bands, who many of us saw in the '60s and '70s, in bigger and bigger stadiums when the sound quality is not ideal? When I was a child, I saw pop groups at the grandstand during the exhibition and at the ice rink, and I loved it. But when the Centre of the Arts was built, the quality of the musical experience was so much better for amazing concerts of Gordon Lightfoot, Bruce Coburn, and later in the '90s, the sublime Leonard Cohen. This was progress. It was an improvement of what we had, from a stadium used for concerts to an actual concert hall. It was a better musical experience. In 1933, we were progressive when we, when we built the impressive World's Grain Exhibition and Conference Building for an international agriculture show. Alas, this last remaining building was recently burnt down, and this will now be the home for the new stadium. Progress should mean that things improve or that we're learning new things, all for the betterment of civilization. With this stadium, progress means that we will go into debt to spend a fair chunk of tax dollars, both civic and provincial, to build a stadium where we sit to watch a game or a band. It's a passive activity. What shocks me is that we're very willing to go into debt to build a facility where we sit to be entertained for 10 days of the year when we already have the same structure with its solid history, which serves the same purpose four blocks away. Progress should mean that we create something new, innovative, or for a better quality of life. What baffles me is that while we're willing to go into huge debt to build a new stadium, when it comes to active physical recreation, we cannot afford to even use what we have, what we cannot even use what we've already built. Our yearly tax dollars are not enough to keep an outdoor pool open when it's 29 above, as it was this late September. And yes, the weather has changed. We cannot afford to maintain surface, surfaces of tennis courts near the inner city, and now there's talk of eliminating them because no one's using them, because they're impossible to use. The city cannot groom ski trails or even clean sidewalks for those of us who try to walk in winter. We are told over and over that there's no money. The Recreation Department is always forced to hold the line on its budget, even though more people, especially seniors, are becoming more physically active. Not only is this good for the individuals involved, it's the cheapest way to keep healthcare costs down. So progress to me would mean to use our existing facilities, the Centre of the Arts, Dark Hall, both underutilized, to support new creative performers, to support the local and the young musicians amongst us. That would be a way to build our culture from within. Progress would mean finding money to keep outdoor pools open when the weather is good. We spend money on holidays to go to beaches in winter in search of happiness in the sun, but we could have it here in our own city if we used our own institutions to the fullest. That would be the first step in progress. Use what we have for the benefit of our citizens and build the things that we need. We need to be visionary within frugality and fiscal restraint. The stadium is where it should be. For the 10 games of the year, it is well-used, so our tax dollars are well-spent. People are already having great fun at Taylor Field. Many improvements have been made at great expense already. We've been told by the cities, by city staff, that Taylor Field is still safe to use. It needs more toilets. An ideal city is one where all citizens are healthy, physically active, and culturally engaged. This stimulates the economy, but even more importantly, physical activity and cultural stimulation lead to happiness. Progress should keep this in mind, and our tax dollars should be spent for the benefit of all citizens for 365 days of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ma, for your presentation. Are there any questions of the delegation? Councillor Fraser.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just thanks for your presentation, and if you have anything else to add.
Well, I guess I worry also about the cost overruns that will happen and the purpose of the stadium, because we've seen mistakes being made in the plaza, where now it is no longer a plaza nor a road. So keeping a goal in mind after the three changes that we've already seen for the plans of the stadium is also worrying, especially if we haven't talked about it with our citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Ma, for that. You can return to the gallery, there are no other questions, and we'll go to our next delegation. Ms. Carpa, you could identify yourself, who you represent, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and there may be questions afterwards.
Debbie couldn't be here tonight. Is it all right if I read her presentation?
Yes.
These, this is what Debbie wrote. While gathering signatures for the petition, calling for a referendum on the stadium, I received comments that city council should be interested in. First, many people stated that we already have a stadium, and why do we need another one? Many people answered this question themselves and stated that city council is serving its own interests and do what they want regardless of what citizens of Regina say. A vast majority of people signing want, want affordable housing and want the housing issue resolved before spending taxpayers' dollars on a stadium. Also, why is the public subsidizing professional football? Lastly, many citizens could not understand why this highly controversial issue was not put to a referendum during the last election. I hope you will take these comments into consideration before going ahead with a new stadium. Thank you.
Thank you for reading the presentation. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our, our next delegation, Mr. Edward Jones. If you could identify yourself, who you represent, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and there may be questions afterwards.
Yes, good evening. My name is Edward Jones. I'm a citizen of Regina. I believe that our city requires a referendum on the stadium for the following reasons. Number one, there have been many articles over, over decades which have been opposed to the public funding of venues for professional sports teams. These articles gave strong arguments to prove that there is no net economic gain from these teams to the local jurisdiction. Number two, there, for many years, we've been told the Canadian municipal infrastructure, that's roads, transportation systems, sewage, water, et cetera, is old and must be properly maintained, replaced, and improved. This infrastructure is said to be a vital and an essential ingredient for economic success. Three, local property taxes and grants from provincial and federal governments are not presently at levels that can guarantee this vital ingredient. Four, why would we want to further jeopardize our chance at economic success by transferring money from the essential ingredient into a stadium? And five, the professional sports team that is in Regina is 100 years old. It has professional management, and it has money to advertise during, during local elections. If they do not like the city's facility, they are free to build their own facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your presentation. Any questions, delegation? Councillor O'Donnell.
Thanks, Your Worship. Good evening, Mr. Jones. A comment that you made sparked a thought, so first one, are you, do you recall, or were you around Regina when the then Centre of the Arts was built?
Uh, well, I was at university then.
Okay.
So I, I, I know only the superficial part of that history.
There are two things I remember, and again, I'm asking if you can verify. Part I remember is that it was a steel structure that stayed steel for a long time. I don't remember the reason why, perhaps you do. And the second one, was it not fully funded by provincial dollars? In other words, property tax dollars? Do you know that? I, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Well, I imagine it was. I, I think it was proposed during Expo 67 or for the celebrations for, for that, and when many, I believe the federal government gave the thrust for these facilities to be made across the country.
Yeah, that's my memory as well. So Canada's 100th anniversary and so on. The second one is just an information piece from me, please. You, you made a comment about infrastructure and so on, and about the lack of a current tax system to cover that. Are you aware of the efforts to try and get the federal government to, in fact?
Yeah, yeah, yes, I am aware of that effort. They've been proposed by, you know, the committee of, or whatever you want to call it, of large municipalities for several years, and funding as of now has not been forthcoming. We, we would hope that it would happen, but so far, it hasn't happened. If it happens, then all our troubles are over, and then we may, we may have had a different discussion tonight, but, but it hasn't happened yet.
You're more of an optimist than I, but there are efforts, and I'm happy to hear that you're aware of them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councillor O'Donnell. Thank you, Ms. Edwards, for your, your presentation. Our final delegation tonight is Jean-Marie Allard.
That's Jean-Marie.
Jean-Marie. Thank you for the correction. If you could identify yourself, who you represent, and maybe questions afterwards.
My name is Jean-Marie Allard, and I represent the people I have interviewed while collecting signatures. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councillors. So I have gathered a few points when I was speaking with people in the, during the exercise. Some people told me that they were not actually against building the stadium. What they certainly did not want was for taxpayers to foot the bill, but...
Mr. Allard, I just, would you mind just sort of reading your text that you sent in to the perks office, if you wouldn't mind?
Okay.
Thank you.
We have more pressing priorities: pay the debt, provide more affordable housing, and do something about Regina North Central. Regina not to pick the, the cost of, the overrun cost, which someone told me would be in the vicinity of 30%. I'm not sure where that figure comes from, but it was brought up by somebody. Regina does not have a positive track record on project management, for example, and I called it the Cornwall Centre Development, but I guess it's called the plaza by mistake. The final tab is about twice the projected cost with questionable results. What we actually have is adequate for what we do, Roughriders, football, and their fans. We will not be able to afford to maintain or upgrade our infrastructure. Generally, people are very dissatisfied, some are downright angry with the process as it appears that this project may go ahead at great cost without consulting those who will eventually pay for it all, the taxpayers. And I would like to remind this group that 9,899 dissatisfied, angry people can create a lot of trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allard, for your presentation. Other questions from Councillor Hinks?
When you say Regina doesn't have a good record as far as projects go, are you familiar with the Cooperators Centre coming in on time and on budget? And are you familiar with the Global Transportation Hub that came in a million dollars under budget and ahead of time?
But that was brought up by the person who brought it up was referring to, again, the plaza where I believe the numbers that were told to me was original figures around $7 million, and it came up at double that. At least, that's what I was told.
Again, you said Regina doesn't have a very good record as far as projects go, and again, are you familiar that the Cooperators Centre came in on budget, on time, and the Global Transportation Hub came in a million dollars under budget and ahead of time?
No, I am not, but that was not brought up by people I spoke with.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Hinks. Other questions of the delegation? Thank you very much. You can return to the gallery, and we'll now consider the report before us. The motion we have is a stadium funding petition for a referendum, CR 12-162. Councillor Bryce?
Thank you. I will move CR 12-162.
Thank you. Any comments?
I'll second that.
Councillor Fraser?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, just a quick, a few quick thoughts for the, for the council and the gallery. We live in a democracy, not because it's trendy, but because it's a good way to make decisions. And I actually think referendums are a more direct way to make a decision than, than a council. The reason we don't have a referendum on everything is because it's not practical. And my thought is that we have a process in place, and I think it's a, it's a fair process. I do think it's a real shame that the people that put all this hard work into the referendum actually had to start twice. So I don't think that we necessarily should, should bend the rules when we have rules in place, but I do think that we have to make sure that we do a proactive job in the future of making sure people know the rules, not just that it's on the website and you can find it, but if people have a legitimate concern for a referendum, that they're able to have some help putting it together. Now, I didn't gather any other names for the petition other than my own, but during the same time period, I was outdoor knocking for the election. And I can say that I put in, over five months, I put in hundreds of hours myself, plus I had dozens of volunteers putting in hundreds of other hours. And through all that effort, through several thousand dollars of donations, and through all the attention about the election, we were able to squeak out about a quarter of the, of the signatures that these people were. So I'd first like to applaud the people that gathered signatures. That's a really, a really big effort. That's a, that's a huge number in a city like Regina. And also to question, is our, like, is our threshold too high maybe for, for referendums, considering that we have an electoral turnout of 20-some percent, I think it was this election? Should we look at, sorry?
Thirty-two percent.
Sorry, 32%, 32%. It is a real challenge to engage people in the city, and I also feel that 10,000 signatures, this is not, there are some real concerns about the stadium. It's not a fringe, I hang out with a lot of fringe people, and there's some fringe arguments, but 10,000 people, a lot of these questions about the stadiums are real questions, so, that's my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Frazier. Other comments? You will be closing debate. Counsel Frankel.
Thanks, thanks very much. A lot of talk was about that this is strictly a rider build, and it's the rider this, but I have a question for the administration. In 2000, pick a year, I guess, doesn't matter, 2009, 10, or 11, how many user groups actually use Taylor Field in the city? Actual groups, besides the Rough Riders?
Mr. Schubert?
Your Worship, I believe there is over, excuse me, over 20 groups send about 2,000 hours of community use outside of the riders.
Outside of the riders. Okay. I'd heard other numbers as well, that were somewhere in the neighborhood of, there was like 250 user permits taken out in a one-year timeframe. Is that correct? Within those, I guess it would be within those 20 groups.
Mr. Schubert?
Your Worship, I couldn't say for the number of permits, but that would certainly be reasonable in terms of the hours of use.
And the Rough Riders use the facility a dozen times a year? And, you know, this is just a comment, sorry. The other thing I heard tonight was that, you know, the stadium, because of the iconicness of it, I guess is the right word, Ron Lancaster played there, George Reed, great football players by standards. When you look at New York City and the historical build of Yankee Stadium, and they knocked it down to bring on more progress and the needs of the future, I don't think we're stepping out of line with this as well, because if you think of any grand facility, Yankee Stadium in a sports world is probably the top of the line. So, I think this is a great move for the city to go forward. I've always thought that, and I'll continue to think that until I see it proved differently. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Frankel. Counsel Murray?
Thanks very much, Your Worship, and I just, I wanted to just applaud those folks that took the time to go out and get involved in the democratic process. You know, I guess, on the doorstep, I did the same thing. I was out on the doorstep for several months, talking to people, and there was a lot of confusion, frankly, a lot of misinformation. And I guess if there's something that we can take from this is a little bit better communications, to find better ways to do it, find more ways to get the information out there, because it seemed to me, when I took a few minutes, as somebody who is fairly well-versed in the entire project and the entire RRI, I was able to overcome a lot of those concerns and questions, and most people came around to understand what the vision truly was. But again, it boils down to having the correct amount of information available to people, and I appreciate that it also takes people who are dedicated to take the time to go out and do the research, and find out what is it really, what is it not, and what does this really mean to our future, for our community, for our city, and to our families and to our children. And really, that's the key, is finding out more information. But again, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't always get it to drink. And so, the reality is, giving people at least the options to find more information. And I don't know what the answers are, Your Worship. I don't know that we have a whole bunch of things we could have done differently, but maybe if we can take the time to ensure that we've done the best, the most adequate way of providing information to our citizens, so that they can make good, educated decisions, I don't see any challenge with that. But I do, I'm excited about the fact that people got involved. You know, 9,800 signatures, a lot of signatures. I'm curious if our administration would have the number for the library, when the library challenge occurred way back when, there was a petition that was circulated at that point. That was before Twitter and Facebook and for all the really communication stuff we had, but it seemed to me that, again, there was a struggle there, and I know that that petition didn't pan out either. So, really, it boils down to, the majority of people feel a lot of confidence in the elected officials that they have elected. Otherwise, there would have been a groundswell of activity. So, it gives me confidence, I think that we're on the right track. And so, from that, all that ramblings, I guess if we can find better ways to communicate, let's continue to explore those. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Murray. Counsel Donald?
Thanks, Your Worship. I was struck by a couple of our delegations in terms of kind of reporting back, and I'm going to use that for a theme for my comments as well. So I'm going to report back. One of the things that I felt was important to do during this election process, because of the number of issues that were on, was to make as much personal contact as I could. So over the course of the election, there were 10,000 pieces of paper dropped, not by Canada Post, by the way, but by a very small group of us, so that it was hand-delivered, basically, in each one of the homes. Further to that, once that part was done, we, and again, when I say "we," I'm talking about basically three people, and together always, we went out and door-knocked. I did not keep track of the number of door-knocks, but I will tell you that certainly the number 3,000 comes into mind. And this is where we have a representative population each of about 20,000. Now, in that course of that time, I was welcomed into a number of homes, I chatted with people on the doorstep, and I had, some people just said, "Thanks very much," or "No," or whatever. There are two things that I made sure that would happen in my area. One, to those, whether they agreed with me in terms of platform or not, I asked them to please come out and vote. So even to those who said, "I don't support your position," I asked them, "Please vote." The second part was, perhaps a little bit deviation from that, perhaps like Counsel Murray, when you were invited into home and had a chance to chat, people saw things a little bit more holistically. The other part about this, for me, was that in the constituency that I ran, and there were two people running, only two. And so, when people would say something, I said, "I do not know the other person's platform, but you need to understand that he is opposed to the stadium, and I'm in favor." I wanted to make sure to every one of those houses that I door-knocked, or more, that we made sure that there was a choice here. So, what is interesting to me in terms of the referendum was that, I didn't keep track on piece of paper, but I can tell you that probably less than 15 people even mentioned a referendum to me. Either way, did not speak of the referendum. I found that many people were already decided about whether they felt about a stadium one way or the other. Found that. The end result was the vote, was that 64 percent of the people voted for me and 36 percent had voted for the other candidate. Now, you can take that however you want, but if it was purely, purely on the stadium issue, I'd say that was fairly clear. Second part of this argument that I've heard repeatedly, and I chatted with one lady about it tonight on purpose, and that is about the idea of housing and social housing. And so, at the beginning of this whole process, whether you want to call it RRI or whatever, we were always talking about some form of housing, to make sure that was a component of this. Further to that, and I won't take away from what the mayor will say, there are other workings in effect to address housing, and so it's not an either-or. At no point in time am I aware that the provincial government said, "Here's a bag of money, you can do with it whatever you wish." That was never the concession. So to the person who said, "So, are you discussing with them?" We discuss with them all the time about a number of things. And further to this, I will be tomorrow morning at 6:30 leaving for Ottawa to try and make sure that the federal government does come through on their presentation of infrastructure long-term dollars. So, there are a number of things going on. I like the idea that there are some people that brought this notion forward. I did not keep track of how many times the Leader Post headline was about a petition, but it was well out in the public. I do not know how many times our local media on television or radio spoke of this issue, but you would have to be, have to be not engaged at all to know that this was an issue. In every one of the wards, you had an option to vote in one way or the other. In the mayoralty race, you had a choice as to how you wanted to feel. If this was the only issue, you had clear choice. I believe the choice was made, and I believe it's time to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Donald. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Bryce, you can take the chair, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Counsel Bryce. I'm just going to add a few comments to what has already been said, and we just went through a great experience of democracy over the last couple of months. And there's lots of places in the world where this doesn't take place. And none of the people around this table took that lightly, and neither did any candidate that ran against us took that lightly, nor did those who voted and follow what happens take it lightly. This is a great privilege and honor that we have to have the right to vote unhindered and to express our views unhindered and without any kind of reprisal. So I'm very proud of the election that we just went through, because it was a divisive issue. I'll take a couple of comments from Counsel Donald, just to reflect on my experience during the election, and I'll be very quick on that. I knocked on doors in every area of the city. I didn't obviously hit every door, but I went through every area of the city. And as time went on through the election, it became very clear to me that people were in favor of the stadium, but they wanted more information, but they essentially liked the stadium idea. Now, that's why I stand by. I made it very clear in my election that I favored the election. The other candidates were not quite clear or had changed their position, but I was very clear on what I said. And I think the results from this council reflect absolutely crystal-clear the expression of those who voted for us. And we had a better turnout than three years ago, but we had, I think we got what we asked for. And that's what happens in a democracy. Is it clean? Is it clear? Is it perfect? No, it is not. But the alternative, I think, is quite substantially different than that. I want to applaud those who talked about the petition, worked on the petition, because this is democracy. This is what democracy is all about. We have a threshold, which you must get to, and the report is receiving file in this way because we cannot go forward. It is not a legitimate, qualified petition. Any way you look at it, it is not. It doesn't mean that the views that are expressed are not significant or not important. And what I said at the door, I've told those who I've talked to, that part of democracy is listening to those who share other views. For those who don't agree with you, it's not either-or that you never talked to anybody else, that they voted against what you wanted. You listen to what they say, because that is what leadership is about, is listening to those who have different perspectives, and informing yourself when you make decisions. But again, in this case, because they're looking for a petition that wants to have a referendum, there is a quote-unquote winner or loser in this one. You either make the threshold, or you don't. But it doesn't mean that anybody around this table is not going to listen to what was being said by the delegations tonight, and what they said before the election, and all the notes that we've seen here. Nobody could govern in that way. The issue of affordable housing, that was the number-one issue of this campaign. And that's what I talked about, and I will move forward on that, and this council will move forward on this issue. We know it's a huge issue. But we also know that it's not either-or, that you can only have one thing without another, that we continue to provide $17 million of street repairs, the most ever, that we continue to work with our senior governments about housing, that we look for infrastructure, we look for more policing for our streets. All those issues are important. Madam Deputy Mayor, this is an important element, because this is a reflection of democracy today. And I am very pleased that this exercise took place. It informs us to be better councillors and better citizens. And I certainly support the notion of receiving and filing it. It's very informative as to how we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Bryce, to close debate.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to all those who spent the time going and getting signatures, and also to those who actually spent the time to sign the petition as well. It sure shows that we have lots of civic engagement here in Regina, and I think that's a great thing to have. I am also glad to hear that you will go on and talk to other levels of government about funding things like social housing and our infrastructure. I also want to assure you that we don't want to, we're not going to ignore those other issues that came up. I think we still know we need infrastructure money, we still know we need to deal with the pension, we still know that we have a housing issue here in Regina that's severe. So, we're not going to ignore all those other things just because the stadium and the RRI comes forward. So, I want to reassure people that. I also have a question for the city clerk. Another councillor mentioned that when somebody is doing a referendum or a petition for a referendum, do we only refer them to the website, or do we have information available for them? Are we able to sit down and have a talk with them, so that mistakes aren't made, so everything's done properly?
Madam Clerk?
Through you, Your Worship. In this instance, yes, we actually did meet individually with a number of people who had interests in initiating a petition. We walked them through the legislation, we helped to draw out what the petition would need to look like, to ensure that it would meet all of the sufficiency requirements. And we did, in fact, go so far as to put people in touch with one another when we knew that there was more than one person interested in initiating the petition.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. I was kind of taken back when it may have been just to check out the website, because I know that's not normally how we do things. So, having said that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Bryce. On the motion to receive and file, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next delegation is Colin Stewart? Proposed amendments to the district plan. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. If you can identify who you are, who you represent, and you have ten minutes for your presentation, and there may be questions of council afterwards.
Certainly. Good evening, Your Worship, members of city council and city administration. My name is Colin Stewart. I'm here representing myself as a concerned citizen of the city of Regina. This evening, I would like to address the requests by the rural municipality of Sherwood to amend the district plan. As you know, they have requested that the following legal land descriptions, being Sections 5 and 8 in Township 17, Range 20, west of the Second Meridian, and the north half of Section 23 and all of Section 24 in Township 17, Range 19, west of the Second Meridian, be removed from Map 13 as potential areas of residential development. I understand that the executive committee has opposed this request. While I, as a resident of Regina, have some concerns about the proposed developments by the RM, I believe that opposing their request without offering an alternative that would be less detrimental to the growth of the city of Regina is counterproductive. My chief concern is with the proposed, excuse me, proposed tire storage facility to be developed in Section 5 or 8 above. These two sections of land are north of Highway 1, west of Regina, at the intersection with Pinky Road. Section 5 is adjacent to the highway, with Section 8 immediately north. I note from the map that these two sections of land are quite close to future development in Harbour Landing. While today they are quite distant, in the future, they will be separated from residential development by approximately .625 kilometers. Should there be a fire at this facility, there would be significant risk to the residents of Harbour Landing due to toxic fumes. Sections 23 and 24 above are adjacent to Highway 1 east of the city, and encompass land on both sides of the highway. I note that these two sections of land are adjacent to land already being developed on the north side of the highway, and will hem in this future growth. I realize you are already aware of these concerns, and likely share them with me. I applaud your concern for future growth. However, as I mentioned a moment ago, I feel we would be better to propose a compromise. I think these proposed developments would be a good fit for the Sherwood Industrial Park immediately north of Highway 11, between Pasco Street North and Highway 6. They could be placed immediately north of the industrial park, with little to no impact on the city of Regina. I would ask you to request a meeting with the RM to discuss the possibility of locating these developments there, and, should the RM find this location unsatisfactory, discuss other possible locations for these two developments that would be suitable to the RM without negatively impacting future growth of the city. Thank you. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for your presentation. Are there any questions, the delegation? Devan, and thank you very much for your presentation. We have a communication from a NICRO group, if I could have a motion to receive and file.
Your Worship, I'll move the recommended disposition of communication.
Counsel Murray, a second, please.
I'll second that.
Counsel Bryce, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Counsel Bryce.
Thank you. I will start by moving the recommendations on CR 12-163.
Thank you. Would you take the chair, Counsel Bryce, please?
Devronan, thank you very much for your presentation. We have a communication from a NICOR group. If I could have a motion to receive and file.
Your worship, I'll move the recommended disposition of the communication.
Counsel Maria, a second, please.
I'll second it.
Counsel Bryce, all those in favor? Posed, carried. Counsel Bryce.
Thank you. I will start by moving the recommendations on CR 12-163.
Thank you. Would you take the chair, Counsel Bryce, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We have before us a report that we considered last week for the, in the arm of Sherwood, and you'll see there are a couple of areas that the Arm of Sherwood was asking the city within our, as close to our city, to develop for industrial usage. And the report speaks to a denial of the two parcels, but pulling out one section, which is the Sherwood Twin Arenas, and that's being asked that we approve that, and Executive Committee is recommending that this council approve that small parcel of land because there is a development on there already, there's buildings already there. So I'll speak, I'll ask you to speak to that and set that aside. I will certainly vote in favor of that. Madam Deputy Mayor, there has been some discussion and some concern between the Arm of Sherwood and the city of Regina of this development, and it's been in the media, it's been reported over the last couple of days. And I think it's important that, as the city, we keep our eye on the ball for development, that we understand that we have, we live within a region where there's tremendous opportunity for growth and partnerships, not just with the Arm of Sherwood, but with other municipalities around the city. And it's important that we continue to develop that relationship. There has been some concern expressed by this council, obviously, but through Executive Committee, of the scope and nature and speed of development prior to our official community plan being developed that would talk about where and when we grow and expand our borders to accommodate future residential and industrial growth. That is an important pillar of growth. Indeed, it's part of the provincial government legislation that we develop in OCP that will dictate and express what that growth would look like. At the same time, the Arm of Sherwood has its own plan it's going through, and they too are talking about development near the city fringe and away from the city fringe, of course, further into the Arm of Sherwood. The point we're speaking of, of course, is the fringe around Regina, the area of shared interest. It's a concern to us that the pace and understanding of the development that the Arm of Sherwood's asking for, without knowing the process, is a concern to us. I have made a call to Reeve Eberly to speak about this issue because it's clearly raised the concern of Reeve and his council. Inasmuch as our council is also concerned about, again, the pace of development, I'll be meeting with him later this week to talk about how we can best meet our shared objective of development in a way that respects our jurisdiction, but also allows for expedited development. So I will support the main recommendation of the Sherwood Twin Arenas, but I would ask the members of council, someone from council, move a referral motion for the rest of the development on the east side of Victoria Avenue, as well as the west side, which is subject to a tire facility being built. And I'll do that because I think it's important that we speak with both the Arm of Sherwood on that particular development, how we can expedite that and move that forward, as well as talk to the proponent, because there are other places that we may see that development happen. As mentioned earlier, the Global Transportation Hub may be one. The delegation also spoke of other options that I think we should be exploring, but not closing all doors yet. So we do share many things with the Arm of Sherwood. We share the vision of cooperation in growing our community together, growing our reason together. What we don't necessarily see eye to eye on, but, you know, work on that, is, again, the pace and development. So, again, I would look for a motion for the rest of that, and the purpose would be for the administration to look at the options, advise Executive Committee and Council on the next steps, and also allow some communication between our councils, between myself as mayor and the Reeve of the Arm of Sherwood.
Counsel Bryce.
Thank you. If there's no other questions about this, I will...
Any other comments, Counsel O'Donnell may have some.
Before there's any other motion, I do have some questions and comment, if I could, please.
Right ahead.
Thank you. In our document, there is an appendix, and in front of me on my iPad, it is in color. And I realize that people watching can't see this, but it surrounds the city of Regina in the color of growth area. Can I ask, if this was to be fully developed, each one of those areas, what the projected residential growth, sorry, what the population of Regina would be at that point?
Mr. Carlson.
Your worship, looking at that Appendix 1 map, all the areas shaded green are future residential, which would exceed a 300,000 population.
And based on our work done through the Design Regina, OCP, and so on, that is a window that far exceeds any other plans that we have now by significant numbers, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Carlson.
Your worship, it has recently doing some additional demographic projections based on growing population that we've experienced in the recent time, and we're looking at about 65,000 population increase over the next about 20-some years.
So I just want to identify that number and those plans, and I think we have to keep that in view as soon as we are growth. To your comments, your worship, in terms of the existing, what we call the Twin Arenas, they are vacant, have been for a while, don't want to see any buildings left alone, and so I see no reason why those shouldn't be developed. That land is already looked after, and there's access points to it. We're in fine shape there, so no problem on that one. I think that the comment that I expect to hear is that this council is really, in fact, wanting to see growth. We just want to make sure that there's a coordinated effort, that this sits in the right locales. I think there are options as well. I look forward to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Donnell. Any other comments before we move forward in the vote? And I would have this being the vote that would talk about the Sherwood Twin Arenas being pulled out. Counsel Bryce?
Thank you. So I will, if we look at the motions for 12-163, I will leave number 2 as is. That's the Twin Arenas. And I will refer Point 1, 3, 4, and 5 to administration to do further consultation and study regarding these areas and...
Press, you might want to have two votes on this one. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, your worship. That would probably be in order. That way, it shows support for recommendation number 2. And I would also seek clarification as to whether or not the intent is to include number 5 as part of the referral, or whether, in fact, we do want to delegate authority to Executive Committee to continue to look at applications as they come forward.
I think that, given the discussion at Executive Committee, that we would want 2 and 5 to go forward, the rest to be tabled.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So the first one is we approve motion Point 2 and Point 5. Counsel O'Donnell?
On procedure, please. I think it's important for those that are watching that they understand what we're talking about. Could I ask for those both to be read?
Okay. Certainly. Counsel Bryce, you want to read those?
Sure. Number 2 is that the city of Regina supports the proposed amendment requested by the rural municipality of Sherwood to remove the following parcel from Map 13 of Sherwood, Regina Planning District Development Plan, the district plan, parcel J, Plan 84R 63614, Extension 0, with the northwest 24-17-19 W2M. And number 5 is that the city council temporarily delegate the authority to Executive Committee to direct the administration on further applications received regarding RM development pending the ongoing intermunicipal negotiation and discussions between the city, RM, and the province.
If members of council will allow me just to elaborate on these two recommendations, as discussed by Executive Committee, the first one, Point number 2, that is, is segregating out the buildings of the Twin Arenas. The city council has no interest in stopping development on a developed piece of property, which has been asked for by the Arm of Sherwood. So we agree to pull that out and go forward with that. The Point 5 is instructive because with the dissolution of the District Planning Commission, there is no venue for us to review applications that may come forward by the Arm of Sherwood. Point 5 allows us to delegate to Executive Committee temporarily to review those applications and provide an official response back to the Arm of Sherwood. That's an explanation from Hynette. If there's no other questions on this one, I'll call the question on Points 2 and 5. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Counsel Bryce?
Thank you. Then I'll move the amendments to refer 1, 3, and 4 to city administration for further study.
Now, there is no debate on a referral motion except for on questions of clarification. We're all clear on the motion? Counsel O'Donnell?
Again, on, so that everybody understands what we're talking about, 1, 2, and 3 don't mean anything to anybody, even if there's just a simple descriptor, I'd like to have people understand.
Perhaps we'll have the administration explain that, but these are the two parcels of land that were asked by the Arm of Sherwood. Mr. Carlson, you want to give a quick summary of that?
Yes, your worship. So the land subject to the referral by city council would be a couple of sections west of the city, near the, just west of Pinky Road, and land adjacent to and north and south of Highway number 1, immediately east of the city. So that land, currently, the RM is seeking exception of that land to remove certain portions of it from their plan to identify it for future growth. Presently, within the district plan, it's identified for future urban growth, so it's protected for urban growth. So essentially, council would be referring that back to the administration to consult further with the Arm of Sherwood.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Mr. Davies has some other additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one suggestion or a request. There's a matter of some urgency, as expressed by the proponent, that is Cal Tire, and I'm just wondering if council would like to attach a timeframe in terms of our review and reporting back to council.
So what's the reasonable timeframe?
I would ask the, Mr. Davies, do you have a reflection on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest a month. So within, it'll be the next meeting in December.
So...
Back to the second committee or council?
To Executive. Okay. Next meeting of Executive Committee.
Add that to my amendment.
Thank you, Counsel Bryce. Any questions on the process or background, not the motion itself? All those in favor? Posed, that's carried. Thank you very much. Counsel Bryce, you have committee reports or dates of meetings coming up.
I'll move CR-12-164, which is the meeting dates for 2013.
For council and Executive Committee.
Yes.
Any questions on this at all? Counsel O'Donnell?
I do, and it is to the clerk. The meeting dates that are suggested here are, in fact, a slight change from the way we have operated the timeline between Executive and Council. I'd ask the clerk to describe that, please.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, it certainly is a change in how we have brought these meeting dates forward in the past. Previously, what would happen is we would have an Executive Committee meeting on Wednesday, and the reports would go immediately to council on the following Monday. What we have found from some members of the gallery is that if they have an interest then in preparing a brief to council, we haven't actually given them time enough to submit that to us. So we have backed the Executive Committee meeting up by one week.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful change. I would encourage everyone to go along with this. We heard repeatedly that the timeline was too tight. This is not too tight. This is, in fact, a reflective period of time. From there, though, can I also ask the clerk another question? Does this have any other impact on some of our other committees, please?
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, your worship. It does mean that within our office, we are doing some checks and balances as to how the rest of the committee work will flow through. But again, typically, main committees would meet in time for reports to hit council, and so this shouldn't be interfering with that.
Thank you.
And Counsel O'Donnell, any other comments on the change of dates, or are you okay with it? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Next report is elected official community appointments.
Thank you, CR-12-165, which is that the office of the city clerk, under the direction of the deputy city clerk, be directed to complete a committee structure review in 2013.
Any comments on the report? This is what we typically do after every election. We ask the clerk to do a review of our committees to make sure that they're running efficiently and effectively. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Counsel Bryce?
Thank you. CR-12-166, I would just like to make one change here, which...
Should we move the main amendment, the main motion, and then ask for amendment, perhaps?
I'll move the main motion.
Okay. Okay. Now you want amendment?
I would like to amend the Finance and Admin Committee. I would like to withdraw Counsel Young's name and add Counsel Hank's there.
You have amendment before us?
If I could have a second?
Yes, community appointments, that's correct. We moved the main motion, now we're having an amendment. To the amendment. You can just second or for it.
As the Chair of Finance for the last eight years, I'd be happy to second that.
Thank you, Counsel Marie. Any comments on that? All those in favor? Posed, carried. The main motion is amended. Any other speakers? Now, we do have, we do have a vacancy on the Regina Appeal Board. I know that we've had some discussions, some members are looking at their workload, working at their responsibilities, and I believe that there is one member of council that will remove his name from the appeal board. And I'm wondering, does Counsel Finer would have his name removed from that? Is that true, Counsel Finer?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I would like to remove my name from appeals.
Okay. So do we have anybody else who, any other member of council that would like to sit on this board? It's a very important function for council and for our community. Rather than dwell on this, we certainly can table this appointment to the next meeting of city council. And maybe, there may be an order since I believe that it's only recently that Counsel Finer decided to move away from that. Counsel Bryce?
So do I need to amend the motion to take this one out?
You can move an amendment as long as we don't have anybody else who would want to add to it, but apparently there is no one else, so...
Okay. I will move an amendment to reconsider the Regina Appeal Board at the next Executive Committee.
Okay, that's good. Need a second for that? Counsel Hank seconds it. Any comments? All those in favor? Posed, carried. Thank you. Done? And the main motion is amended. All those in favor? Oh, yes, we have an inquiry from Counsel Flagle. This is to be read, but not debated. Counsel Flagle?
Thank you for allowing me to do this. This is regarding inquiry EN 12-4. Winnipeg Street North, north of Coop Home Center to 12th Avenue North. What I'm looking for, the recommendation with the increased volume of traffic, overflow parking in the area, congestion, dust from gravel roads during summer seasons, I'm requesting the city administration provide information on the following four options. Options available for ensuring proper traffic flow and dust control in the area. Costs associated with widening the road from Coop Home Center to 12th Avenue North, and then also costs associated with paving the gravel portion of Winnipeg Street North from 12th Avenue North to the city limits, and to what extent can the city work with Kensington Green Developer and/or Rural Municipality to refurbish northbound West Service Road of Uplands running along Albert Street North from 12th Avenue North to the city limits? If I may, I'd...
There's no speaking on it. Is there simply an inquiry?
Yeah. I actually wanted to, well, you can ask me the question about timeline.
Yeah, we can, there's no additional information on this one, not even already on it. It's an inquiry that's lodged with the city. I'll need a motion for adjournment, though.
I'll move adjournment, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Marie moves adjournment. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Second, Counsel Bryce. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.